To order clerk call the roll.
Council member Cazarelli.
Here.
De Penya.
Here.
Raffiano.
Here.
Council member Natarin, I'll be attending this evening. Council member Rovell.
Here.
Mr. Little Burke.
Present.
Mayor Mountain.
Here, sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday February third 2021 editions of the Bellville Times and Star Legend. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellville Town Hall Bolton Board and copies aren't filed in the municipal clerk's office.
Budget legions.
I, the legions of the United States of America, declare the states on the nation under God indivisible, great and just as are all.
Danny, are we ready for presentation?
There was a little mix up at the time, so there thought it was seven, so they're out of the way now. So we can move on and come back to that.
You're allowed to move on. Traditionally, we do executive session beginning of the meeting. Since lately, we've been taking no action after executive session, we are pushing executive session to later on in the meeting with the hopes of moving everything along much faster, not having to vacate the room and come back in and wait around for a half hour while we're in executive. So with that being said, we're going to push the presentations forward until our dignitaries arrive. So without being said, the next item on the agenda is the combined conference regular meeting, our discussion. This is our first council meeting of the month. The first council meeting of the month is always a combined conference work session. This is a conversation in and among the elected officials, members of the administration, sometimes invited guests, department heads of TB, anybody in the public hearing the conversation has something to add or has a question about something. Unfortunately, this is not the time that you speak. You will have every opportunity to speak during the public portion section of the meeting. Right now, you're really just listening to a conversation in and among ourselves, as awkward as that might seem. So just bear with us as we go through a couple of different items. Any council member has the ability to put anything they want on these discussions. My first discussion is the status of the November 2021 and February 2022 Go Pilot integration.
So mayor sort of teed up. I think the issue of what was outstanding was related to the construction department or mostly to the construction department. Somewhere around January 29th, 2030, they came in, did a hands-on training. At that point, we turned, Go Pilot turned the construction department application on. However, after speaking to the department head and obviously Mr. Di Lorenzo is here, after speaking to Mrs. Di Lorenzo, what they want to do is they want to run the old system and the new system together for one month and then weed the old system out. And there's several reasons why you want to do that. Certainly, Mr. Di Lorenzo is here if there's any other questions from the board.
Speaking of that, last year when we brought Go Pilot in, we also paid concurrently to have Muni City, which was our existing vendor. We're now two months in, potentially going into March. Will we have to pay Muni City again for 2022?
I do not, I'm almost positive. I think, and I think that fee was like less than $3,000 for '21. But there should be no reason why we're paying for that. And certainly Frank, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, I don't think we paid for it yet.
So potential, no, every time we get potential.
The last thing you want, the last thing you want here is March 1st, right?
You gave me November, you gave me February.
You did, you're absolutely right. We gave you February 1st. We gave you February 1st, which in fairness, there has been a lot of activity. And we actually had some, we had some Zoom calls. We had two today, we had one on Friday. So we're still continuing to work with the program. And the applications that are up and running are doing fairly well. And certainly, the construction department is a key component. And we're hoping that, you know, I don't want to say it, but I have to say it. I'd like to think March 1st is when we're totally up running free of deal system.
So in November 2021, it was an issue with transferring data from the old vendor. That's, we have all, Go Pilot has all the data.
Right, we got that probably in December of 2021.
So we're no longer, the only thing we need Muni City for is parachute in case we don't get them running in March. And we keep them running concurrently, correct?
That should be it. We have to get some, we might have to extract some more data depending, you know, how it works.
Anybody else? Anybody? Going once, going twice? No? Okay, easy enough. Next topic is the status of the township's program to identifying county. This is something we really haven't talked about. I know that we're now mandated as of last year to come up with some kind of a ID system and a number within a couple of years. I'm not that up to date on it, but I know I've heard about it. So I just want to make sure that we have some kind of.
Okay, so we're required by a federal mandate to replace 400 lines. However, the, I wouldn't call it the latest monkey wrench, but the latest challenge that was provided to us is we are now required to notify 5,400 Bellville customers, residents customers, that by certified mail. So here's the challenge, because we went out to a mailing house to see how much.
What is the notification now?
It's a mandate requirement notification that basically lets those residents know exactly what is in the water. And this has to be done by certified mail. So the first thing we went out, took 5,400, we went out and we got a mailing house just to get a price on it. It's going to come out to about $40,000. So clearly, we may be able to do it in-house, but it's a lot of work because each letter has to be, each, each letter has to be addressed to an individual. So somebody has to, we would have to do 5,400 letters, then the cards. So the mailing house is, mailing house is right now, I think it's $7.95 and that includes the postal. However, if you take the $7.95 and you times it out by the, I think it's 5,400, it comes out to like close to $40,000. I think perhaps if we could probably do it for $20,000. Problem is, you know, doing it in-house creates some challenges. So I'm trying to see if there's somebody else that will do it.
So that's news, that was all news to me. I never heard of it before.
Relatively about, not even a week ago.
But that's not kind of what I'm asking about. We're mandated, the state of New Jersey, no, that's the federal mandate.
I'm sorry.
The state of New Jersey last year said that we have X amount of years to identify. And I don't know.
What's that?
Yeah. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out where we are with that program.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think what he's asking about is, I don't know, a couple of months ago, I advised everybody about the requirement that the town has to identify all the lead lines in town and provide it to the state, a preliminary list, and then there's timeframes that you have to firm up that list.
That's, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
So what is the, I'm sorry, the question is, the exact question is, what's the, yeah?
Not the status, but what's like, what next steps are we, are we going to fit it out? Are we going to have the engineering company do it? What's the plan to?
First thing we have to do is we have to put the money in place and then we're going to go out to bid.
Do you think what, an outside company to come in and do it? I'm just, I don't know.
Absolutely. It has to be a third party. We don't have the ability.
Lou Field didn't outside when they did their program.
Correct. And again, Tom couldn't make it tonight, obviously, he would have the most.
But you're thinking outside.
No, no.
Yeah, it's definitely, yeah, and it's definitely outside.
Outside, you got, I mean, you literally got to ring doorbells and look at records.
That is correct.
One of five.
And I will give the council a more updated.
Last thing is just, anybody else on that? And I know last year, we talked a lot about getting the budget sheets out by November. We really haven't heard much in, or in February as far as the status of the budget.
So the status of budgets are very easy. And I know Kim is here, so certainly she can jump in if I provide any misinformation. But most of all, all the departments have submitted their budgets. We have taken those numbers, we have put them into temporary budget sheets. Our stumbling block to provide a forecast or, you know, a somewhat projected budget is that the financials have not been done or have not been completed. Joe Ficom's office is working on that. They should be done.
It's due by the 4th of March.
They're required to be done by the 4th of March. And what, the difference, the only difference there, or I should say the substantial, is that that would be able, we would be able to confirm our revenue, which obviously, if we're going to give you a budget number, I need to be able to confirm the revenue. And that's the, that's the only missing link right now. So besides the deadline being a requirement down to the state by the first week of March, our budgets, certainly our initial budget would be completed by the end of February.
And the deadline to submit budgets, end of March?
No, April.
Introduce, talk about the introduction.
The end of March or revised by the first meeting after.
And last year was the first year in a very long time that we were actually, we didn't get to the end of March, but we got the first meeting in April. Do we think that we're going to be on track for that again?
Yes.
CFO said that, not me. Yeah, do you want to second that, Mr. Aron?
Sure.
Second anything. Any questions on the budget anyway? We don't have much yet. Okay, so I think that I had everything on today for the discussions. Next up on our agenda is report to manager.
Okay.
You have five minutes.
I should be able to do it in five minutes. There's 40 slides.
You have five minutes, Mr. Manager.
Hold on, hold on.
Clock ready, start.
Hold on. There we go. All right, so. So this is the meeting that I, for the last few years, I put together an annual report. I think it's some interesting data that we can share, we can reflect. And it's a good tool for budgets and certainly other reasons. So first, this is certainly a great opportunity to thank all of our departments. Again, you're going to hear me use the word pandemic, COVID-19. It's all throughout my report because COVID-19 is still here, the pandemic is still here, and it had a great impact on all of us for the last two years. We're closing in on our second anniversary somewhere around March, March 17. And this is a credit to everyone that is on this screen. Every department head and every department in Bellville clearly has went far beyond and above everything that we could have asked them for over the last two, two years. And so I use this slide as a, just a big thank you to everyone there. I'd like to also welcome, Willie Galan took additional responsibilities on. So he is our purchasing director. And thank you, Willie, for taking those responsibilities on. Anybody who knows Willie's work ethic, they certainly exceed every level. Also, I'd like to thank Maria Marola in the front row. Thank you. She's been the acting health director. As you know, we have an absence there. Maria jumped right in. So again, to all of the department heads that are here tonight. And if I come across a slide and you have a question about a particular department, our department heads are here and certainly can answer the questions. Go right to the clerk's office. Again, clerk's office, as you can see, 321 resolutions. That, that's roughly, that's roughly about 50 more resolutions this year than last year. Very, very busy. The next one, Oprah, Open Public Record Act, Record Act. Again, right now, that slide shows 1,115. That's about 700, I'm sorry, last year, we're 700 Oprah requests. This year, 1,100. So that's 400 additional Oprah requests. And again, Kelly and Jackie have done a great job responding to 1,100 Oprah. Here's our finances as far as some of the fees that we've collected. Again, a tribute to our finance department. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Kim. As a footnote, building permit, 649,000. Prior year, 215,000 for that same line item. Here's a slide for Willie. Willie, we processed in the 2021 calendar year 3,700 purchase orders.
The processor paid?
Both. All right, we move over to our municipal court. We have Yara with us today. Yara, thank you for the wonderful work you have done over the last year. Again, court, as everyone else, has been shut down. And if you take a look at the work and the activity that's going on, for instance, as an example, under the parking violations. Parking violations is an additional 2,000 parking violations that were addressed by our municipal court. So that 13,000 is up 2,000 on last year. Again, fees collected, if you take a look at the bottom, we've collected $797,000 of fees. Again, as you can see during COVID, during the shutdown, we're doing 4,700 scheduled federal cases. Again, it's not easy. If anybody has, you know, participated in a Zoom meeting, it's not the same. When you're face to face and you're in a room with people and then you're on Zoom meeting, it's a challenge. So again, we thank you for how you worked that out. Our tax assessor, obviously, right off the top, 120 amended assessments for the net ratable gain of 468,000, generating 177,000 in revenue to Bellville. And what's also important on this slide is that Bellville with a zero added assessment appeal loss. So again, we have to anticipate appeals. We, last year, 2021, we didn't lose one. Thank you, Kevin Esposito.
Good job.
The law department. Thank you, Steve. We have been working on an employee manual as well as a policy and procedure manual. And again, this was very, very tedious. It was, it was a lot of work. We've been talking about it. The chief actually made it a requirement. And in 2021, or I should say at the end of 2021, Steve was able to complete this and we had distributed this to all the departments, new employees, things like that. So this was great work by our law department. Thank you, Steve. Bellville's finest, police department. Total calls for service, 54,771. Again, that's an increase. And if you take a look at response, 1,600 motor vehicle, motor vehicles. Now, keep in mind, in 2020, because of the COVID, you know, there's a major shutdown, less cars on the street. So now you see the numbers grow, but they grow because the prior year, people were not out at night and things of that nature. So again, the pandemic played a serious role on this. Last year, in 2020, we had three retirements. You can hear me talk a little bit about the retirement and the early retirement incentive programs. So in 2020, we had three. Now we're looking at seven in 2021. As our personnel, basically, it's manpower has basically been the same. I know the chief's going to come before the council in the future and talk about beefing up the patrol a little bit because our numbers are depleting. In summary, again, COVID played an impact on our police department. We had 49 assemblymen on the patrol division. We represented 49 Bellville police officers were obviously impacted by COVID. So again, played a serious role on the police department. Great slide here. Again, tribute to our police department. Overall, our crime reduction, down 9%. Burglaries down 20%, thefts down 16%. So again, great job by Bellville Police Department. Thank you, Chief McKeon. And again, there are X amount of activities that they participate throughout the year. There's more than 12, so you can see there's, you know, in some cases, there's more than one in a month that they're out there working. And community policing has been an instrumental part in our police department. And again, great job. Here we go, fire department. Am I in that picture? Yes, I wanted to make sure I picked that up. Melman wasn't in that picture. Let's see. COVID again had an impact on this, on our prior department. And they responded to 5,453 calls. Okay, that's 500 more than the previous year. And here's, here's a little bit of the breakdown. But as you can see, in those EMS calls, 141 calls related to COVID. No one can forget on September 1st of 2021.
Give me a second.
Time is almost up.
Hey, my report is good. Going to be a tough act to follow. My five minutes of rope. This report will be published on the website. So obviously, for residents, if you really want to get and take a look at some of the numbers. Just give me a second, I'm going to catch up to that. COVID, five emergency calls for 400. We were talking about September 1st, no one can forget. That evening, it was, it had a major impact on our community. Certainly, both police, fire, public works did a phenomenal job. 13 retirements in 2021, 13 retirements. That's a lot of officer retirement. Again, everyone has heard me speak about the early retirement incentive. Ultimately, you know, we were able to provide an early retirement incentive. And again, top-heavy positions brings on some of the younger offices. So obviously, ultimately, it's a great savings and that's behind us. Five Bureau of Prevention, 1,400 inspections. Again, this number is a little less than the previous year. Safer Grant came down a little bit. But again, we're out there between ambulance billing, safer grants and other permits. We pulled in in revenue, 800,000. COVID played a major impact as far as the number of double firefighters that were inflicted with COVID is up there as well. Public Works, Bobby Walter, where are you Bobby? Bobby, thank you for all the work that you do as well. If you take a look at, for instance, just as a small example, we generated 200,000 pounds of white goods collected. That represented about 7,000 more than we covered last year, $7,000. So that works. And here's, again, brush collected 100 yards, 5,000 yards of mixed vegetation, 1,000 tons of tires, public recycling, 150 tons. So I know sometimes when you drive past a public works facility, it looks a little messy. But we've collected, just on that site alone, 150 tons. 300 patches are what we saw. Interesting salt use for 2021. Keep in mind, the year before, 2020, we had a very mild winter. We used about 280 tons for the entire 2020. 2021, that was last year, had a tremendous snowstorm of 20-plus inches. And we had a rough winter. 2021 winter, we used 1,200 tons versus the 280 tons of the previous year. And dollars amount, just so you can appreciate it, it's $50,000. And road maintenance, we do a great job keeping our trucks and, you know, these trucks have maybe like a life hood of 15 years. We keep them on the, on the road for 30 years in some cases. And water department, again, water maintenance, great. We had a bad winter. The year before that, we had 11. Last year, we had 25. And again, that's based on the temperatures. They do a great job. Playgrounds, keeping Town Hall, Washington Avenue Firehouse, Public Safety Building. These are, we do this every day, up to code enforcement, moving right along. And again, if you have questions, we have the department heads here. Jump right on that. Shows you just a snapshot of some of our permits and projects that we have issued. Have some new single families, two families, three families, new construction. We also have 20 residential units on ground floor commercial. What's interesting here is we collected $1.6 million in total fees. Okay, and that number is up about 400,000 from the previous year. Again, previous year, we're in the middle of a pandemic, COVID. Seals process 660 for those of the senior occupancy and over 5,000 inspections, over 5,000 inspections. So our hats off to the buildings department as well. Recreation, I know Jerry Tom Gusta had family commitment tonight. Represented very well by the silver fox himself. Again, we trying to keep as many activities going. I think in 2022, you're going to hear about the expanded improved arts program that we're working on presently. So we're always working on that. Again, we shared the recreation program with you, just to show you how many participants in our six, in our basketball program, 600 participants, those children participating in basketball wrestling. In spring, which is February to June, our soccer team won their league championship, Aitken under travel team undefeated. These are all accomplishments that we can all be proud of. Summer program, we offer summer camp, travel baseball, travel soccer, obviously junior buck football and junior buck cheer, cheering that's going on June and August. Then you come back into fall, football program at 193 participants. Our town soccer, Bellville's known to be a soccer community, so to speak. And that number reflects 450 participants in our soccer program. 450, that's a lot of kids. Health department, moving right along. Again, these are just items that we're responsible for on a day-to-day basis. Some of these things we take for granted, but they do a great job. Again, here's the services, food establishments and complaint inspection, over 400. Property maintenance inspections, 1,100. Again, these are, you know, this is a day-to-day operation, but when you think of 1,100 inspections during the course of the year. Dollar ride, we can't be more proud of that. Proud of a total of 10,167 rides that we've provided to seniors in Bellville. And that, that number, believe it or not, is up by almost 3,000 from the previous year. Again, previous year, those people traveling, those people going out. Mayor, I know you're looking at me and we're getting close to the end. Vital statistics, bird certificates, process 5,800 bird certificates, it's 1,800. That's, again, that's huge numbers. That's a lot of, that's a lot of public service to our community. And vital statistics, they do a great job. Magda and Debbie, hats off. Public education is part of our whole program. We provide Q and A, we provide works with the township employees, we work back to school supplies, food distribution, food inventory. These are all services that we provide, including nursing, our nursing path. These are nursing division between clinics, schools and senior home visits. Something that Bellville should be very proud of, that we're getting there. COVID-19, again, played a major, major impact in 2021. Hopefully, 2022 is a better year for all of us as to retain COVID. Again, here's fees collected. Again, prior year, our dog and cat license went up pretty close, believe it or not, by 12,000, $12,000. That's great. And you see the kind of money that's generated through bird certificates and death certificates. This is money that we, it's a service that we provide to residents. And members of the council certainly open to questions. And again, I want to thank our department heads for being here tonight. And I think they did a great job this past year and certainly raised the challenge of COVID. Thank you. If you guys want to clap, it's fine. So I guess we could open up to council for questions or comments. I'll start off. I stopped counting at some point. I was going in order with you, clerk, purchasing, court. One thing that you didn't mention, which is a very positive thing, I think, is the fact that, at least I'm only going chronologically the way you did it, clerk, purchasing, court. Those three departments are down staffing. Those three departments are down in payroll. There's less payroll in clerk's office than there was two years ago. There's certainly less payroll in the purchasing department than there was two years ago. And there's absolutely less payroll in court. Most people may not recall, but because of COVID, we eliminated a judge. We eliminated a public defender. We eliminated a prosecutor. Two employees retired that weren't replaced. So I think that.
So I think that these departments, and I actually, I know that health is also probably down salary as well. So these departments have accomplished a lot, even working with less employees. And we've done a good job administratively here to not quickly replace employees that leave. That's not necessarily what some of the directors always want to hear. But I think we've done a really good job with less and I only kept track of those four departments. Forgive me if I missed anybody else, that might be down, whether it's DPW or police or fire. But those, now I think that goes to be said, because you never hear that in government. Government always grows, there's always more employees every single year. And here, multiple departments, it's not an anomaly. There's multiple departments here in this town that are down salaries, down employees. We are still producing and the directors are still doing their jobs, employees are still doing their jobs. So I think they need to be commended for that. Thank you all for the job that we do. Anybody else in the council?
Good job, Mr. Manager.
Can you email me that or can you put that on the website?
We put it on the website and certainly if anybody wants a copy, I'll blow that up and email it to you.
Okay, so is that the report of the manager or that's it, you're done, right? Next, actually I have a question for the manager, since it's the report of the manager. I'm getting a lot of, because I'm going to mention it in my mayor's report about the job that DPW did today on Washington and Bellevle Avenue. But as always, when I try and give positive news about something, it's what about this and what about there and what about here? A lot of complaints, justifiably by the way, about Grellaw Parkway. So is PSC and G, I know there's equipment there, I know there's material there. What, can somebody give, so I can just communicate that to some of the residents that keep asking?
Through the GM, I'm going to ask Bobby to give us an update, if that's okay Bobby?
Once the weather starts up and up, they're going to be coming back to finish up and repaint that part of Grellaw Parkway.
And can you just quantify when you say that part, are we talking?
Probably from Nolton up to Passaic, because that's where they were doing most of the work.
Is that both sides of the street or just one side of the street?
Just the side that they dug up.
There's equipment, there's debris there, there's material there, so we're talking Nolton?
The debris we've removed already.
Okay.
But the equipment and everything, they're slowly moving, it has to.
So Nolton to Passaic?
To Passaic, yeah.
Nothing else on Grellaw? No, something else is going to be done there, it's going to be our program.
Anything that they dug up, the services that they replaced, that's what they're going to be coming back.
Right. I just didn't know how much they actually dug up. So anything else gets replaced would be part of our road program or the county or whatever we get, correct?
And through the chair, I was also told there is on the corner of Grellaw, I forgot the name of that street.
Austin.
Austin, there is our property that we have put in things on and a lot of complaints came and I did talk to the manager. And the manager's addressing it to where when they're completely done, that's going to be groomed and made nice again because it becomes a big, it's a big hole. So just thank you, Anna.
Anybody else in the manager? All right, next item on the agenda is going to be report of the mayor. I have an abbreviated report. Past events in Jan, sorry, early February, a couple days ago, we celebrated Chinese New Year 2022. It is the year of the tiger, very special to Belleville, as most of you probably know by now. First ever Chinese New Year, celebrated, East Sea Board was celebrated right here in Belleville, New Jersey. 2022 is the year of the tiger. Last year was the 150th anniversary, making this year the 151st year that Belleville has celebrated Chinese New Year. Hope you all enjoyed the fireworks, very low budget this year for fireworks. I think they went off well, people were excited to see them. Upcoming events, every single Tuesday, we have Tai Chi yoga for our seniors. Every single Thursday, we have Zumba. Even though the Tuesday clubs and Friday clubs respectfully, respectfully? Respectively, respectively have decided on their own that they don't want to meet right now in February. These programs are still offered for seniors, even active adults. I've had people ask what the age requirement is, programs are available. We do get a pretty good Tai Chi following. I've been there before, but Tuesdays, 9 o'clock Senior Center and Thursday, Zumba Senior Center. Even though the Tuesday clubs and Friday clubs currently are not meeting, we still have those programs being operational. February is also not only Chinese New Year for the first two weeks, but it's also for the whole month, Black History Month. But we do have signage upstairs outside the mayor's office from Belleville, fast black history. Some people don't know much about, most certainly Google. That said, the Board of Education is going to be having a presentation or a small program at their next board meeting, I believe. And also the library on February 24th is also working on their own Black History Month event. Information for all those events would be on the respective websites. Ending it up with news, you may have saw my social media today, DPW came out, replaced or put some, was it a hot patch?
Cold.
It was cold?
Cold patch, not hot patch. It's cold patch, but we heated up.
Okay. So I, we've been getting a lot of, a lot of complaints about Washington Avenue, Washington Avenue State Highway for the most part. The state's coming in with a $12 million program. The manager was CC'd on some communication between me and the state, asking for updates, asking for not only an update on $12 million program, but if they can come in and help us out. They'd been reluctant to do so, whether it's timing or staffing or logistics, I have no idea why. We've been asking DPW to maybe get around to it. You can't do hot patch or cold, you can't do it when it's cold out. Today was the first warm day and was very pleased to see DPW out there, just that one intersection, really, really bad. So it was great to see the guys there today doing that and working hard doing that. Our home improvement program is up on the website, $22,000 in a, it's considered a loan, but it's forgivable as long as you stay there for at least five years. You have to qualify income, the income is not necessarily low income, it's about $60,000, but it is household. So it's a really good program for seniors on a fixed income, $22,000. We have a pot of money of $1.6 million that was not funded by taxpayers, it was funded by developers. So that's a very good program, we're trying to get all that money out there, trying to advertise that program. It is, I believe in the tax, in the water bill, Mr. Manager, have you got a notice in the water bill?
That is, that is correct, I went out in last week's.
Okay, and then you might have seen also there were some other big redevelopment news. 12 acres of land on the Nutley border by Main Street, that's been announced. We've been working on that for a while, but that's finally been announced. That will be a project that will be completely razed, not down. You're talking a contaminated site. It's been eyesore, a blight on Belleville. You enter Belleville from Nutley, it's the first thing you see representing the township, it's been awful for decades. That will be razed, knocked down, the site will be remediated, there will be modern warehousing on there. Very low impacted neighborhoods, zero impact to schools, will throw off a much better tax base than what was currently there. And you probably know by now that the adjacent property right next door is the Finkelstein property, Walter Kitty property. It's 24 acres, been remediated, will throw off another good ratable for us. So that is 39 acres of ratables that this governing body since 2018 has, has worked on redevelopment plans and action plans for, something that decades, people have sat up here and nobody collectively has ever gotten that done. That's going to be very good for taxpayers. Lastly, no, that's actually it. My mayor's report, we are now on the next item on the agenda, which is committee reports. It's the first committee in a month, so really any council members, we don't have standing committees, we have basically ad hoc committees. Any council member that's been, that's jumped in on something in the past month or so, wants to give an update, now is the time to do so, I'll start to my right, the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just like we did last year, a celebration of Women's History Month, we are going to be doing once again the same initiative that we helped last year where we had people from the township nominate women in the community that are outstanding for whatever reason. And we invite the community to nominate someone, whether it is through the work that they do in the community, whether it is through something that they have overcome. And last year, we had a really great experience recognizing these women's accomplishments. And I love for people to think outside the box and really just, you know, allow us to tell these stories of these amazing women. So there's going to be more information on our website, but we're looking to honor these women on our March 8th council meeting, which also happens to be International Women's Day. So yeah, so from here until March 1st, we'll be taking nominations for these outstanding women of Belleville. And I know last year there were questions whether they should be residents or it could be someone that works in the community. And we have opened it this year for people that have a longstanding history of working here in Belleville, that are part of the community through the work they do here in the committee. So this will be from our council meeting on March 8th and we'll be taking nominations until March 1st through email. All the information will be there. And then lastly, also like to invite everyone for our Dominican flag racing, which will take place on February 28th. That's Monday at noon. Many of you know that this is part of also my heritage and we do appreciate that as a township, we celebrate the diversity of all of our communities. So I know that last time, because of COVID, we did not do something so big. But I'm hoping that more of the township, the Dominicans, you know, people of Dominican heritage will come out and help us celebrate our Dominican independence. So that's it for me.
Perfect. Steve?
I'm good.
Kenny?
Nothing to report, I just, part of the manager's slideshow that he left out and I'll throw it in there, it's a great report. But we had some volunteers from the Green Team doing some amazing stuff this year. And they're here. So, you know, you can take it on here later, but thank you Gabby and Manada for.
I think well the report is.
Yeah.
Do we have anything against Green in the show, with Green?
It's my word of jacket, Green Team.
Speaking Green Team, they're the Green Team.
Next year, I promise everyone that it will be slide one.
It's hard not to forget that.
Slide one next year, I promise.
Councilwoman Burke?
Oh, I have nothing.
Tom? Okay, so that is going to end our committee reports. I'm going to flip backwards in the agenda and go back to, as long as the attorney's okay with it. We're going to go backwards to that today?
Bless me, come on.
Guess we'd be got in trouble. Presentation, so council guys really want to just announce what's.
Yeah, let's just make sure that that's here. Yeah, okay.
So this is going to be a, we're going to receive the Nutley Irish Association's 2022 St. Patrick's Day Parade dignitaries.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This year, St. Patrick's Day Irish Parade is a little early. They, they change the date every year, this year it's actually early March, March 5th. So we are giving proclamations to all of the honorees. The late and great past president, Tom McHenry, always took care of Belleville and he always gave some of the honorees from Belleville. So every year, he always did a couple from Belleville, a couple from Nutley, and we always thank him for that and we are grateful for that.
And do you have a date for the parade?
Yeah, I think March.
March 5th.
5th, yes, March 5th.
It's always the first Saturday in Belleville.
Yes, thank you. Karen is the new president, chairwoman, whatever you want to call yourself, so thank you. I'm actually going to start off by, maybe you could come up and say a couple things about the parade and the honorees real quick. And just introduce them real quick and then we have some proclamations for everybody. Yes.
Hello, yes, our parade is Saturday, March 3rd at 1 o'clock, sorry, March 5th, I got the parade for March 5th. March 5th at 1 o'clock. We have a beautiful investiture mass at St. Mary's Church at 10:00 AM. It's very nice, this is where, that's when we do the sashes and invest all the five dignitaries. And this year, we have five wonderful dignitaries, two of them are with us tonight, some of them couldn't make it. We, as you said, always have the best of Belleville and Nutley. So we have, tonight we have our firefighter of the year, Brian Salmon. And our member of the year is Jack Wieners. And that's about it, did you want them to come up for?
Yeah, so yeah.
And just to thank, thank you for recognizing them today and bringing us out and. And where I did notice the green actually outside in the video. So thank you for your support of the Nutley Parade every year and.
Oh, easily, that's, we're humbled to be a part of it.
We're great neighboring towns and we bring out the best in each of us.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so I'm going to start off with Brian Salmon, I'm going to ask him to come up here. Thank you, Brian. I'm going to, I'm going to read it from here in the microphone. So whereas Brian Salmon has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the firefighter of the year for the 30, 43rd Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade, Belleville Fireman, by the way, so thank you. Brian's family immigrated from Tipperary, Tiparri?
Tipperary.
Tipperary, Ireland and settled in Belleville in 1885. Brian was born and raised in Belleville by his parents Philip and Judy. He is the second of three children and has two sisters, Jennifer and Lauren. Brian is married to his wife Courtney and they have two sons, Brian Junior and Colin. Brian comes from a long line of public servants dating back to the early 1900s. His great-grandfather, James Joseph Salmon, was a volunteer firefighter and became the first paid firefighter in Belleville, but was tragically killed in the line of duty in 1916. Brian's great uncle, Michael Flynn, was the chief of the Belleville Police Department in the late 1920s. Brian's father, Philip Salmon, served 25 years in the Belleville Police Department, retiring in 1991 as a captain. Brian joined the Belleville Fire Department in 2003. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2019 and captain in 2021. He is currently serving as battalion chief. Brian has served as the president, vice president and secretary of the Belleville FMBA Local 29 and is currently the secretary of the Belleville FOA Local 229, which is the Officers Union. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and municipal council of the township of Belleville wish to share in the celebration of this event and do hereby congratulate Brian Salmon for being named firefighter of the year by the Nutley Irish American Association and wish him good health and continued success in the future.
Class 1992, might I ask? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, congratulations.
Our next recipient, Mr. John Wieners. Come up, sir.
I am Tony's older brother. My mother fed him at work.
You can't pick your relatives.
So I'm going to read it from up here if you don't mind, but it says, whereas John J. Wieners has been selected by the Nutley Irish American Association as the 2022 Member of the Year for the 43rd Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade. And whereas Jack's proud Irish heritage dates back to the 1860s when his maternal great-grandparents, John and Ann Flynn, arrived in the United States from County Court, Ireland. And whereas in 1981, Jack began his 25-year career with the Parsipanie Police Department. He had a highly decorated career in both patrol and detective divisions accumulating numerous distinctions, I'm sorry, numerous honors and distinctions along the way. Whereas in 1973, Jack married Gloria of Nutley. Together they raised their children, John and Amy, and they are the proud grandparents of Jack, Colin, Daniel and Elizabeth. In June 2021, Jack and Gloria celebrated 48 years of marriage and they never had a fight. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor municipal council, township of Belleville, wish to share in the celebration of this event and do hereby congratulate John J. Wieners for being named the Member of the Year by the Nutley Irish American Association and wish him good health and continued success in the future. Thank you.
There's three honorees that couldn't be here tonight because of previous obligations, but I just want to read their names real quick. The, the parade queen is Shay Martin. The grand marshal this year is Dr. John Kelly. And another, another Belleville native which we're grateful for. The deputy grand marshal is our own Chase Hamilton from the Fire Department. We do have proclamations for them, but they'll be given out at their dinner, which is coming up also. So thank you again for coming, we hope to see you all there.
Okay, so thank you. Thank you. So we're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. We are now in item number nine, approval of minutes.
And combine conference regular meeting of June 7th, 2021.
Do you motion? Need a motion?
Yeah, just take a motion.
Hold on. All right, we're on approval of minutes. Any a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion made in second. All in favor? Any extensions? Nope, next item's communications.
A B C from Comcast of New Jersey. Uh, see, I checked in the amount of $128,000, $543.58 for use of municipal right away. And B, you see from Verizon, a check in the amount of $224,000, $518.58 for the use of the municipal right away.
Okay, ordinances? Orders for introduction?
Ordinance number one, ordinance to amend ordinance number 3634, creating personnel positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Motion. A motion? You have a motion made?
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Razziano?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
No ordinances for second reading. Next is public commenting. Need a motion, open public commenting?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Open public commenting. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Razziano?
Yes.
Strumel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melon?
Uh, okay, so... We're now on public commenting. Residents or anybody here has up to five minutes to discuss, uh, hopefully municipal government business, but if not, you can talk about the weather for five minutes if you'd like. Uh, this is kinda new territory for us. I don't know if we have anybody on the phone.
No one called in, sorry.
No one called in.
No one called in. Is there anybody there right now?
No one called in.
No one called in.
We would know that?
Yes.
Are we satisfied that that's good? Okay. All right, so, uh, now we're gonna move to people that are here in the room. Anybody have anything for public commenting? Mr. Frank Antoni. Just gonna ask everybody to come on up so that you name an address for the record. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, the, um, mention Frank Antoni on Prospect Avenue. Uh, the last meeting I brought up the, uh, filling the, uh, street excavation. You told me Tom Harris, uh, said you filled with gravel and you haven't contacted me. Nobody's contacted me.
I have to, I said, I thought I was gonna put you in contact with him together if you didn't contact me. But now that I know that you want him to contact you, I'd be more than happy to take care of that.
Mr. Manager, just speak into the microphone please.
Yes, you got me.
Those are three pictures, like, 75 feet away in the corner over there, Bellevue Avenue, Washington, where we had several water main breaks in the past month or two.
Sure.
And they, they don't fill properly. I mean, you people must drive down there, don't you? You see these cars like going over a war zone and it's ruining cars. I mean, your shocks are going up a thousand times just trying to make that, uh, if you come down the hill and the left turn. When are we gonna fix them properly? I mean, you know, we dumped it gravel and, uh, I don't know, somebody has said the gravel is friendly here, but it's a waste of time, uh, with the gravel. I told you last, the perimeter of that hole, dirt surrounding it filters from the right into the gravel and you got the cave. Everyone you do cave in. Now you complain about public service on my gray light pathway there. What about our own repair company? Is that, you know, it don't make any sense. Uh, I was 19 years old. I worked part-time a little bit for NATO papers. A little old Thai immigrant with a third grade education. He used to do subcontract work for plumbers. See, he would excavate the water service holes and fill them back up. And we would have to go down there, not with an automatic gas damper, with a 30-pound hand damper. And he would yell at us, tighter, tighter, foot at a time. So, you know, I've done this. I've been in business now 50 years. Any holes we've done, we've sit with the same dirt. Why are we wasting all this money and time for zero effects? Okay, the same answer I get all the time, nothing. Now, I wanna address the, um, so-called $39 tax increase only we got last year. I've got, over the last couple of months, I've got three calls, two customers and one neighbor around the corner on Cedar Hill Avenue. Uh, these are seniors. One woman lost her husband 20 years ago. She, all three of them have never used the, the minimum. So, they always paid the minimum even though they didn't even use it. It was $24.50. The one woman, just before Christmas, called me. She, please come over. I can't afford a plumber. I got a leak here. My water bill is so high. She didn't have a leak. She didn't realize that $55 was the new minimum. Uh, that's a $124 increase for the senior citizen. And it meant, those are only three I know. But all these, a lot of seniors that don't use the minimum. So they got a $124 increase, which is a tax increase, 'cause you look at your report, it's part of the budget, the water bill. So, you know, you wanna help, see, and, uh, Councilwoman Depena, you know, dear, the Hope to Courage report you did, it's a very nice project. He said, fear is affecting people at a level in which we can't even predict what the long-term effects of stress will be on the nervous system. These seniors are stressed, you know? So one of the things you could do as a council person, reduce this minimum. You have a lot of citizens that are being hurt by this $55. Might sound like much, but 126 years, this was... She didn't wanna appear. She didn't want me to use her name. But when she's only making $800 a month social security check, $126 is a lot of money to these seniors. So I hope you do something and, uh, just acknowledge the fact that, um, we didn't get a $39 tax increase. The water bill was a tax increase also.
Thank you. Next, Josh?
All right, Cross 95 Bell Street. All those, are you done laughing so I can talk? Thank you. 520 Bellevue Avenue, that was a pilot... Don't shake your head. You always do that.
I'm allowed to shake my head.
You always laugh at people. Anyway, 520 Bellevue Avenue, pilot per, ordinance number 3466, which adopted 1/24/17, uh, before you. But my question is, how long is it gonna take this guy? We talked about this before, but at least, you built Belmont Avenue in half the time, a quarter of the time, that this developer's just doing a rehab of the total gut job. When is he gonna be done with that? 'Cause we're looking, you know, he's got a tax abatement for 12 years, but it's, but it's not, didn't kick in yet. So he got five years, a freebie for five years. I hope he doesn't think because he gave you a $500 political donation, he can just drag his feet. That's number one. The resolution adopted September 8, 2020, declared town is an area of rehabilitation. Now, rehabilitation, we talked about this last week and I didn't realize that developers were included with it. But why are we selected in one area is, area need of redevelopment? Of course, you can give them a 25, 30-year break, but in area of rehabilitation, you only give them a five-year break. So why don't we just leave everything as a f- area of rehabilitation for five years? I mean, it makes, so you give them a five-year break instead of a 25. To me, that's called selective spot zoning for certain developers. That's what you're catering to right there. Walter Kitty is a five-year pilot. Area need of rehabilitation. Next door, you just mentioned 681 Main Street. Well, they're gonna, in area of redevelopment. Now you can give that guy 30. Why, why didn't you give it? What's the difference between two properties? They're both contaminated.
Your facts aren't true, Mary.
Well, my facts ain't true.
That's an area that need a rehab.
Rehabilitation or redevelopment? Which one said rehab? Okay. We're gonna find out, okay. Did you sell the building next door? You didn't. Then why were they working out to DPW? Were they working in front of Town Hall? I mean, their building right next door?
I don't know.
They don't know?
I don't know.
You mean, they weren't digging out the water lines out there?
I don't watch the building 24 hours a day.
Well, you're here all the time, 24?
They very well may have been outside the building, doing water work.
Uh, I understand that building's under contract for 1.3 million? I think the guy's overpaying for that building. It's only a shell. There's nothing in it. There's nothing inside.
Now, do you have any government business to discuss?
No, this is, but this is important. This is important. You're always stealing my time. You're only about several hours of time already. And, you know, I don't, I'm just questioning if it's ethical for Mr. Martino to represent you or something like that since I don't, I'm questioning that. And then, we're not done yet, 'cause I got my time. 314 Washington Avenue, I was told you're buying that. Are you getting a five-year pilot on that? And is this guy getting a five-year pilot next door? You don't know. We're gonna find out. Uh, let's see what we got here. We got, uh, resolution number eight and 12. Who's getting that? And you don't, you don't know anybody who's working? No town workers were working in front of this water lines here, huh?
If there was a water line being replaced on any, in front of any property, it would have been Bellevue Park.
I asked you a question. I'm making an accusation.
That's true.
And one of the things you have to do is not allow people to collect signatures for petitions in Town Hall.
Anybody else? Hopefully with Bellevue government business. Sure, man.
Carol Bagnell, 287 Fairway Avenue. First, uh, Kelly, I'd like to thank you for the information you sent me. Thank you very much. Um, but according to that information, the D P, um, this is concerning Fairway and the water and the flooding. D E P came in December, December 21st. They found some old citations and they were gonna work on the new citations, um, disposition. 'Cause now it's two months into it and I know there's been correspondence. I know the Congress person's been involved. So where do we stand?
So many people.
So where do we stand?
Nothing yet.
Nobody's responded to anything. D E P, D E P hasn't sent any correspondence?
My last communication to them was the photo that you sent. I think I CC'd you on that email.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Uh, our Senate office is following up. Our Assembly office is following up. I know the manager at my behest has been in touch with the State Valley to answer that question from the last meeting. Shocking to me, maybe to you as well. He found out that they've already been here, but we're asking them to come back and let us know when they come back and what, what services they're gonna perform. That also happens.
And what about the Saye, um, Valley? Have they, any hard days yet? Oh, that's them?
I just mentioned that, yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize, okay, I didn't realize that. I didn't understand. And, um, so that's those two. And what about, what about, has anyone sort of noticed on the golf course? Has anyone looked at the golf course as to what they're...
Besides my email to the D E P about the golf course, which I CC'd you on.
Yeah, there's been nothing?
It's been...
Two weeks of nothingness.
Two weeks. Yeah, I can follow up again with it, but that's all I do. I follow up a lot and I CC you every time I do that.
Yeah, 'cause that's really unacceptable. How do we go above them? Who's above them? Do we have to go to the governor?
I think that they're gonna, I think they're gonna surface. I mean, I'll send another email tomorrow. I'll CC you again on that. I just think they weren't ready to give us a report yet. But I'll at least get them to at least acknowledge...
Almost two months. And they should have something. And the, and the map that they did send, that was in the information that you sent me, um, it talked about like 2005 site, but the whole 2021 site, that's, it's circled. And it's the same violations that they have in Bellevue.
They were onsite, the manager was there. We were all onsite with them. They saw and acknowledged that. And I just think they're doing a deeper dive with some of the data. They promised us a deep dive. I'm assuming that's what, but I think we should get at least the courtesy of a response from them that we've been communicating with them last week and the week before, that they should at least acknowledge that I'm sending an email. Our Senate office is sending an email. Just let me try and get that acknowledgement for you. But I did send the photo. That's unfortunate, that's, I'm the middle person. That's all I do.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying. It's, it's two weeks and it's, it's, this is now going on since September, actually. Actually, since 2005, if you wanna go back that far. And it's really unacceptable that it's taken in this long to make some kind of recommendations and give us some kind of disposition that the government is gonna take care of it. D E P's gonna take care of some certain things. Because in the meantime, the snow comes, the snow bells, the water comes, and the water keeps coming Because in the meantime, the snow comes, the snow melts, the water comes, and the water keeps coming, and it's coming up the block on a, on a regular basis.
I'll definitely send another email, CC you on it, and I'll word it a little stronger that time.
Thank you.
I have the ability to do that. Anybody else for public commenting? Charles.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Floyd Street. Start off again by making two simple requests, as I had asked in the last meeting. It would be very helpful if you could put a podium here. Most other venues, the Port of Ed, most other councils, when I look at their videos, they always have a podium for the speaker to help those of us who wish to speak with our papers. Next item request I wanna make, the iCompass system. While you've been using it for at least on the last two years, it was one of Mr. Graziano's initiatives. There hasn't been any formal announcement as far as I'm aware of its availability, but for the last several months, with the agenda packets that are made available on iCompass, the bills lists are missing altogether. And for an administration that prides itself on openness and transparency, those bills lists should be included once again. Taxpayers have the right to see how their tax dollars are being spent. So could you please make an effort to see that the bills list are returned? I wanna pick up now where I left off at the last meeting. I ran out of time. And again, I know some of you may think I'm being a dead horse, but I think this is an important matter that needs to be publicly addressed. A few years ago, Kevin Kennedy, when he was with us, when he was on council, he began to pursue Mr. Mellem about his felonious personal voting history. And I've already commented at this, but I wanna quickly rehash some of the salient points in, let's see, December of two thousand and seventeen, after Mr. Mellem had declared that he was going to run for mayor, gave an interview with The Observer, and to quote him, he says, I voted in, and this was in response to Kevin Kennedy's charges that Mr. Mellem had voted illegally in previous Bellevue elections, having been a resident of Lynnhurst. Mr. Mellem is quoted as saying, I voted in Bellevue, in Bellevue in the May two thousand and fourteen municipal elections as I had not yet moved to Lynnhurst. Right, well, as I pointed out, in September of two thousand and thirteen, Mr. Mellem appeared before the Bellevue planning board in conjunction with his property next door. And after he is sworn in, I have a copy of the official transcript. On page thirty-nine, he gives his name for the record, and he gives his address. And keep in mind, this is September of two thousand and thirteen. He says that his legal address is four thirty-four Park Place, Lynnhurst, New Jersey. He did so under oath, under penalty of perjury. Now, after that moment, Mr. Mellem proceeded to vote in three following elections. He voted in the special election in October of two thousand and thirteen, the general election in November of two thousand and thirteen, and then the municipal election in two thousand and fourteen. He was actually stopped in his tracks in two thousand and fourteen, challenged. He didn't, he wouldn't produce his driver's license at that point. Instead, he went home, yeah, he went away, came back with a utility bill for his mother's address, and he was allowed to fill a provisional ballot. But any case, Mr. Mellem, you can't have it both ways. You either lied to the planning board about your residence being in Lynnhurst, or you lied to the state when you proceeded to vote in three elections after you told the planning board you were a legal resident of Lynnhurst. So choose your poison. Who did you, before, which board did you commit perjury? The planning board or the state of New Jersey? Either case, these are major felonies. Each, these are, you know, the felony for the voting fraud is, those are false affirmations. Those are eighteen months in prison for each county and fifteen thousand dollar fines. Now, if you go through all the records, you have, and there's copious records online, various filings of yours. You have your address listed as Lynnhurst from two thousand and eleven to the end of two thousand and sixteen. And then the next address of record is Bernice Road, starting in two thousand and seventeen. There are no other legal addresses for you. So did you live anywhere else at any point during that period of time? I will, my, my, my time is up. Did you live anywhere else?
This question's been long to answer.
No, obviously, it's a hard question, because you, once again, lied. In January of two thousand and seventeen, in order to reestablish your residency in Bellevue, you filed a voter registration form, and you put on it that your previous address was Park Place, but that you were now residing at one ninety-six Doralman, your mother's address. Two thousand, January two thousand and seventeen. However, just a few months ago, in this very chamber, you were asked about your residency. And you said on the record that you have not lived on Doralman for at least the last ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. I do need you to wrap up.
I almost finished, I'm almost finished.
We have other people waiting, sir. You have five minutes.
I'm pretty much the last one, I'm sure, for the night. So, once again, did you lie? You told the state that you were living on Doralman Street in two thousand and seventeen, but yet you told Mr. Drose last September that you haven't lived on Doralman Street for at least the last ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Your time is up. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak tonight?
Five more seconds.
No, Mr. Sheldon.
On the form, writing for your signature appears, it gives the penalty for perjury, eighteen months in prison and a fifteen thousand dollar fine.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Anybody else wishing to speak on maybe Bellevue business? I'm thrilled to be the topic of conversation, but really, we're here to talk about Bellevue's business. Anybody else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Agent Paul Sheldon.
Sorry, I have a motion to close public commenting. We have a motion made in second to close public commenting. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellem.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'm ten. That's it? Each one polled ten? Yeah, that's it. Anybody else? No? All right, let's have a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Your motion made in second, move the consent agenda. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellem.
Yes. I polled at number ten. Twice so far in the last three years or so, we've discussed sister-city relationships. I think they're important. I had the opportunity to see our former mayors in the room today. Second shout-out you got, you know, it's the same meeting. But it's a program that Mayor DeGuri started. He's the one that initially touched base with Forino. And interestingly, Italy's a large place, but most of the Italians in this area, whether they landed in Newark and then went to Bellevue or East Hanover, Fairfield, whatever, were in the Avellino area of Italy. And Forino's right in the Avellino area, so that was a perfect sister city. Had the opportunity to speak with the representative of the, Charlie. His name is not Charlie. Thank you for that.
It's Charlie.
Not Charlie.
Well, he's Charlie to me. He's Charlie from Italy with the English accent.
His name is Carmine, by the way.
Carmine.
I have been calling him Charlie for two conversations.
When he corrected?
Yes.
As a British. Yeah, he corrected it.
Yeah, his name is in the resolution, so that's why. And he's the representative of the sindico, which is the mayor there, a young mayor there. They're, they're very happy. And there's also connection between, isn't there a connection between the Cavanieri when they come?
Yeah, that's what they used to.
No, it's, it's a good first one for us. I'm looking to do more. We're looking, I talked to Councilman Cosarelli. We're looking at, we got one in Italy, maybe one in Ireland. Maybe we'll do DR or Ecuador, something like that. But Jerry started that, so today we have a resolution on that. We've made contact. He speaks good English. Better English than my Italian.
With English accent, right?
Better English than my Italian. Without anything else, for anybody else? If not, we're just gonna do a motion to move it.
So.
Motion made in, I think, second, to move that. Clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellem.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is?
Motion second.
Now, for new business? Do we have anything for new business?
Through the chair real quick. Anthony, if you explore the possibility of coming up with either like a senior minimum or a senior rate for the water bill, what kind of impact, do they have a way of doing that? A flag of some sort? Is there a way to do that?
People probably tax-freeze.
I mean, similarly, something for the water bill.
Is there a state program?
I mean, we have to check.
I don't know other than.
I'm not supposed to say research.
I'll sit down with him and we'll throw some notes out there.
I think we, we.
Good idea to explore. We all know up here that this is a pot of money. If we, if we give Clermoss a break, taxpayers pick it up.
We need a break. They give us a break.
Right. So, yeah, but that's not bad. I should explore. There's maybe a program that can help that. That's it for new business?
That's it.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna entertain a motion to go into executive session. We're going into executive session for, for the purpose of labor negotiations. No action is ever taken while we're in executive session. We will adjourn out of executive session, come back to a public meeting, which will be here, to immediately adjourn. There will be no action taken while in executive, and when we come out of executive prior to adjournment tonight's meeting, we will not take any more action. You're more than like, more than willing to stand outside and wait for executive session to end and come back in to see the adjournment, but no action's gonna be taken either way. So with that being said, I have a motion.
We have a motion.
And I have a second. We have a second, so clerk color roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Yes. So unfortunately, we do have to clear the room, everybody.